Thank you all for taking the second 2017 planning commission meeting. Let me take a roll call, please.
Liz Caskill.
Yes.
Dr. Leanne.
Here.
Brindell.
Here.
Lee.
Here. And to all the planning commission members in every seat, the June 6, 2017 planning commission meeting minutes of unit additions and overcorrections, if not, American motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Ted.
Lisa.
Yes.
Brindell.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Liz Caskill.
Yes. Two items on the agenda today. The first one, 7578 Riverview Road, that exists.
They're not here yet. They should be here.
Okay. We'll put that in the back end.
Maybe?
If there's no problems. No? Okay, fine. Hope no subdivisions. This construction requesting a plan for a sub lot of subdivision, two sub lots. Mr. Kramer. I'm not sure where the top of your stand is at.
Hold it.
Hold it. I can hold it. Oh, pull up.
Okay. Pull up.
Now, before we begin, Mr. Ryan, since we made it into a two sub lot, it just...
It's my answer.
So we do not need a public area for this? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Hang on, let's... Go ahead.
Excuse me, are they going to be running utilities?
I'm sorry?
Are they going to be running underground utilities?
Oh, let me explain first.
Because I'm not... It's not on Mr. Ryan, because then they wouldn't qualify as a lot or something.
It's a minor subdivision. Are they going to have utilities on the lot? Yes, are they running utilities? Along... Is that right? Whether it's a public road or a private?
Private. All we're looking for is...
Minor subdivision.
I think we need the language.
I have the language. But if you want to challenge it later on...
Alright.
Thank you. Everyone, you can take your light.
Oh, yes. Excuse me. Is it on?
Yeah.
Should it be on?
Yeah, it just turned it off.
Yep, it says on. Okay. It's on. I'm Eric Kramer with Dan Gonen in the socials office. Obviously, you've seen my face here before. Tonight, all we're here for is a proposal of a two lot, minor lot subdivision of the property that's on Stone Road. They would have a common driveway, which would allow them to come back, and we've positioned two home sites, which would be just two large estate lots. Each home would run their own utilities back. There'd be no public utilities being extended. It was gone back there, storm, sanitary water connections, electric, gas, those services back to the two homes. In common, they would have a single driveway to come back to the developed part of the site, the southern part of the site. That's all we're really here for.
Do we have all the reasons for your...
Yes, definitely.
Questions from the audience, please?
There were a number of concerns...
Could you please stand up and say?
As a policy question.
Thank you.
You hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm Mary Jane Horton, and I live at 5750 Chestnut. And when we looked at this before, there were a variety of concerns, including stormwater management, that they can't on the surrounding area. There was a long list of concerns, harvesting the trees, hardwood trees, tree smending, wetlands, and radiation. Are those still things that are going to be considered today by the planning commission relative to this?
It seems to me that the last meeting, we had, we covered those concerns, did we not?
These were listed as open items that were on coming out of the planning commission and what was incorporated into the legislation that never actually went to council. I have a copy, I can provide you with it. But they were items that needed to be addressed and were not addressed. They were all items subject to approval, subject to these...
Well, but since we never got to come up with that subdivision, there was no action taken on it. So your question now is, do these eight items apply to many subdivisions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan.
Yeah. Essentially, what we're asking for is a lot split.
Right. Well, we're asking for a lot split, and then two parcels could be created, also need part of it.
Now, that does not include the planning commission from asking questions, seeking information for the architectural people, when they ask, place to pronounce, design, figure out, to put some preventative measures in there, should it be necessary based upon facts or information presented that would be cause some concern that decisions are being taken.
So the better question than the big one, Ms. Horton, you want to raise these items again if you wish to? It's your priority.
Yes, please.
Why don't you raise them and address it? Mr. Kramer, let's see who can answer one at a time.
That would be great. Thank you so much. As far as stormwater retention...
Again, could you please speak, stand up?
I'm sorry.
Excuse me very much. Thank you.
As far as stormwater retention, would you explain to us how that's going to be managed, the stormwater?
That would be two individual lots, and those two individual people would come in, just like any other isolated lot that's being built in Independence, and they would follow the code that applies for that. I could speak to that more. But we're not doing the massive development anymore of subdivision, where it's basically building two home sites, no different than building any other home site that would be available along the street.
Is there a storm sewer that serves that location?
Uh, no, there aren't storm sewers.
Correct, so rather than stormwater, water runoff would be managed?
Each home would have its downspouts, and it would then discharge off the site by the border of the natural drainage discharge.
So would then, originally the drainage design was for that, knowing that increase to Stone Road?
Yeah, it wouldn't be doing anything like that in the context here, because we're just now developing two individual lots, two home sites, two separate home sites.
But where does the storm water go?
It will discharge in the same direction that the natural discharge is present, which part of the site always discharges toward the back, and part of the site discharges towards the drainage area.
Could you speak up, please?
Speak up, please.
Yes, please.
Like, this really, can you hear me? I've got this close, is it really on?
Yeah. It's better with air.
My speaker, okay.
But the storm... There are no storm sewers, so the water from the increased surface area from the driveway, the roofs, the grass has to go somewhere. And then, mine neighborhood goes into a storm sewer.
Right, all the homes along the street, none of them go into a storm sewer, because I think they're very limited, storm sewer along the street. Am I correct?
Can you address the issue?
It's pretty accurate what you're hearing. Some sections of the Stone Road are open ditches, culverts under driveways. There might be short segments that are enclosed, I think, down around them, further down towards those. It runs the can, but I think accurate to say that in this specific location, very limited in terms of storm sewers out on Stone Road.
So I'm assuming that's how this runoff is going to be managed, and what I'm hearing is not a storm sewer, it's just going to be discharge in the surrounding area?
Yes, I think there... Yeah, I want to answer there. For residential construction, homes are not required, single lot residential construction is not required to detain or retain the storm water. While they're going to be required to manage it with swales and things of that nature, best management practice is on the site itself. There's no detention as if they were put in a subdivision where there's significant development and changes to the purpose areas. So like Mr. Kramer said, it's going to be viewed as an ordinary lot of record that's being proposed for the lots.
So whether the discussion of the swale and the water is needed to manage the runoff?
It's going to be a very detailed thing during the site plan review, approval for the house, when the house plans are reviewed, the engineering department, it'd be mostly administrative.
Yes, the way this will be developed now, we're not going to have a subdivision, we're not going to have a street, but a plot plan has to be submitted for each home. That will show how the drainage works, how the connections come to each individual house. And obviously, during the construction part, the actual construction, they have to develop a stormwater sweep type of plan to manage any runoff during the construction. The natural drainage happens, all developed and returned back to lawn. So it'll be shown on that individual plot plan when the house is actually sited and designed.
There was also concern about the wetlands. Is that an issue of how this is designed?
No, this will give the flexibility that a common driveway can come up, and even where we're tentatively positioning the two home sites, the wetlands that exist on the site will be left, so that you know permit needed to be received.
Thank you. And there was also a discussion of minimizing the house sewer from the roof on the hardwood trees.
Well, certainly, that'll be way different now, because we're no longer building a street, a massive grade, which you need to do, remain clear. It would be the driveway coming up through the site, and then the body of the home sites up. So the amount of clearing certainly will be far less, it'd be relative to building home sites.
Okay, but it's also mentioned, a concern about the particular soil and test borings. Has that been done? See, because look at there, that shit, it was very, very tribal? And I'm wondering if that has been done, test boring?
No, in this case, it would not be relative to, since you're only building two home sites, that type of information doesn't have to be divided until now. These homes will be, we'll call them traditional sited, where they would not be near the hillside, they would be near the slope. It would be purely excavation, a basement, and the house would be probably positioned in the natural ground. First floor would be a couple feet above that, natural grade, and the house would be built individually there.
I saw there was a reference to building zone. Is that, and I'm misunderstanding?
No, we're saying that we divide this property into these two plots. This tentatively would be the two positions where home sites could be built. They could be built, you know, a move within that area, and we feel that those two positions would best suit the two parcels as to where they would site the home.
The renown of...
Yes, yes. The home would be probably, these two homes would be adjacent to each other, looking north and south. Again, it'd be relative to the size of the home that could be built there.
No variances.
Pardon?
No variances.
Well, I think there, technically, I think there's one. I think there'd be two. You'd still need to be two. One would be a setback. How far are those houses? What is in the area? Well, yeah, your setback is a fixer, is it a minimum? It's fixed.
Fixed.
Fixed, right, so there'd be a setback variance, because we'll be much farther back.
Right.
It's one. And secondly, would be, you have a regular shape, a lot with that?
Frontage.
The frontage, right. We would need a variance, because we would only have 50 foot frontage. And this zoning, I think the minimum would be 100. Yes, but how, where would the, where would the house sit? You mean 50 foot where the house would go? No, the frontage on the street. No, I understand that. But these lots are going to be... Really deep. And how big are each one going to be? Acreage? Five acres a piece?
Five acres?
Yeah, there may be one, but I'm not too sure. Ours is, our code is a little different. It might measure the width at the average. At the building line? Yeah. Well, we would exceed the width of the building line, but I think your code also, again, you have to determine whether we need a frontage variance or not at the street. It certainly will exceed the width at the building line, because our widths are going to be back here. Each of these lots will build a 200 feet wide at that established building. All those would be covered by the BCA, it would be this board.
Right. I'm assuming they're...
And deny it, if you have to come back.
Please.
Just one more last question, please. Is in the space between the houses on and the pile of the valley National Park, how large of an area is that? Will that be treated, or will that be open from the back of the house to that park? So if a party lot is located, or being found about, do you feed it to the being in this park?
The way we have the two homes sited, they're probably will be 125, 150 feet of backyard. This is a property alignment against the National Park, so those homes would be quite a distance away from that, is where we're citing the positioning of the homes.
So the attention is allocated to the wood, or...
Uh, I would assume, again, when someone builds a home, just like the home you live in, the trees don't, they can't coexist with the house within 23 feet of it.
Correct.
They'd have to be farther back. So I would assume that it's going to be a zone larger than we show here, a little bit larger, that they would have to clear the trees, so people can enjoy the backyard.
Correct, but then, when that's coming back, if it's on the border of the pile of the valley National Park, will that continue? That back end, there is a part that needs to be treated?
Well, certainly, the back, well, yeah, the back, there'll be a section that will certainly be treated.
Is that certain that you need this stuff to be treated? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Horton.
Thank you very much.
Other questions, please?
Yes, sir. Hi, yes, Peter Panzy, most of you know him. I have a little press brief there. Just a couple things. Last time I was here, that house development had been approved, and I take it that's what happened in the whole of two houses, am I right?
Yes, the proposal now is just to create two estate plots.
Okay.
With no, we call it, public street improvements.
Right.
To minimize the impact on the road.
Right. Sounds better. You said it's going to be a private drive shared by both houses. How long is that drive for? Is that like 15 feet or something?
I would assume that they would build something at least 16 feet wide.
Sure.
So two automobiles, they have to be as wide as your road driveway, which is 16 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so wide enough for two vehicles to pass, a vehicle to pass each other?
Yes.
Okay.
Similar to any of the other, we'll call it, onclaves that are built here in Independence, where there are state homes that are setback, private driveways, there's any number of them here, that there's that commonality in the drive.
I'm assuming it'll be concrete or asphalt, or it'll be gravel, or maybe start off with gravel?
No, I'm pretty sure they're, you know, their, the Independence' code requires hard surface drive. Yeah, no gravel. There'll be pavement or asphalt. Yeah, it's to be some type of pavement, it's hard surface.
Okay. And then, like, as far as on the edges of the driveway, how much area has to be cleared in two feet or three?
Did he clearly get this on?
Yeah.
Well, I think when it comes in from the street, if you first come back, because of that strong grade...
Yeah.
That comes up, you will probably have to clear something wider, it could be 20, 30 feet wide. And of course, this is just a driveway now, but still, when you come down to the street, you want enough cleared along the street, your site distance, fully having your driveway to see. But certainly, the impact of this is going to be minimal compared to the earlier proposal of filling the street, which we would have even declared, basically, the whole frontage.
Right.
Here, we can hopefully minimize some of that.
So with this design also, I mean, before with the street and the large footprint that it had up, when that Stone Road, you guys were proposing a wall. I mean, with this design, a wall, probably it's not necessary?
Correct. The difference here will be is, when we were proposing a public street, we had certain parameters we had to meet, grade, so those things. Now with the driveway, both parameters are different. You can have a driveway which has a much greater, steeper grade, the driveway's going to be way narrower than the street. So all those things are with minimize the impact.
Yeah, there's a need to necessarily, that street, except for me and that intersection.
Yes, and I'll be able, the city, I don't know whether they require, like, the lampposts in the city, I don't think so. So no, you're right, we wouldn't have all of those.
Because it's nice down there at night times, because it's for, you know, serving one of my concerns with that house development.
Again, the idea, this is going to be no different than your driveway, or any of the other neighbor driveways, or the Dallas thing.
As far as the length of it going back, and then it runs with sports, probably talking about maybe 200, 300 feet going back, that's shared, or that's...
Oh, more than that's probably more like a 500 feet, 500, 600 feet.
Okay, and that's probably...
So these homes are going to be positioned 600, 800 feet back. It's going to be very secluded, very private.
Right.
Large estate plots.
Yeah, because I've been, I've been after it all, it's, it is a good spot for, it's more to us. Okay, as far as the footprint of the homes, Mary Jane was talking about, the runoff, I mean, if there was a lot pretty clear, it probably would cause, not substantial enough, because the water would just head into the house or the driveway. I don't know if the plans are as far as, grass, or other...
Well, certainly, this can be typical of any larger state home.
Right.
You're going to have, basically, clearing the trees, build a home, that surrounding area that now your livable space is going to be occupied by your home, your driveway, all of your landscape, everything outside of that, no doubt, is going to be all manicured lawn. It'll be relative to the site of the home, the mass of the home that may be built, because now we're talking, these could be homes of a mass of, house could be five houses square feet, it could be 10 houses square feet. Very large state homes could be built there. But all of the yard around it will be lawn, just like your lawn, your lawn.
Because I mean, if you're clear, even if you just have two houses, you're clearly all the trees, which we, I mean, then you're moving the runoff, because even if it's lawn, it doesn't absorb as much water as the trees do. So it just depends on how much of the area would be turned into lawn, probably determine how much more water is going off, you know, it's left there on the wood.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to follow up on what he said.
Please say it.
What he's trying to say is that turf, grass, yards...
Say your name.
Mike McClendon, Lower Hemlock. Turf grass laws are not considered permeable like builders and woods, so I was wondering if perhaps we could consider a limit on the amount of turf grass associated with sites and try to maximize the amount of forested area that could remain. And another question that I have is, do they intend to close the informal trail that starts at the bottom of Hemlock Road and goes all the way up to Concordia? It goes right next to there and on to those lots, next to the ravine that feeds, it's one of the five feeders of the Blue Hole. Trails there now is currently frequently used, and I was wondering if either they would close it off, or perhaps build a little fence so people could still use it to get from the top to the bottom. I've heard of a lot of people making that circuit down Old Hemlock, up the trail to Concordia. 21 is about two or two and a half mile loop, and walkers use it frequently. That's just a couple of things I'd like to bring up. It does go through, I'd like to minimize the amount of damage done to the area there. Can you honestly say that the runoff won't be any greater, but it will be faster with non-permeable surfaces everywhere, especially large ones like ropes and driveways and lawns? So you're adding a lot of non-permeable surface to it. So the one watch has already overwhelmed, the Blue Hole's already overwhelmed at this point, and it doesn't really need any more...
I think we've talked about this before. This area, this drainage area, does not go to Blue Hole.
It would be best if it didn't.
The one drainage area goes to the north, and the quadrant that is in the back does not go to the Blue Hole.
Right.
So neither of these attributed to...
It's actually a three-way divide. It's a three-way divide.
I don't know what divide is, but I can state emphatically that these, this site, its drainage does not go up the Blue Hole, because it drains to the hole, so it goes to the south.
It is possible to do it that way, because the Blue Hole represents the high side of the...
I'm just talking the natural thing.
As you go towards Stone, some of it runs off toward the bottom, toward the curb, and the rest goes into the creek by their house. There's two separate drainages there. There's really no creek, there's just that wetland at the corner. There used to be a creek, but it's still rough. The water runs over the surface when it rains, as if it were a creek. Storm sewers are non-functional from the corner down. So it would be a good idea not to add any more water to the Blue Hole drainage.
Eric, you raised a good point. I thought about this trail, what's all that about?
I, we've been on the site, we are not aware that there is any trail on this piece of property. On the bottom of here, limits of this...
It's either in the National Park or...
Well, it could be in the National Park, that I can tell, but...
I believe it's on those lots.
Bottoms of this property, there's no, we're not aware of any trail across it.
The fact of the matter is, the city's building a trail from that section of area of State Park all the way up to this area. Already, they're building a trail, so I don't think there's going to be any limiting of people using that property back there. I mean, if they're on, you know, I can see the trails on their property, it wouldn't be an issue with them more than people using it.
They're not aware of that trail, speaking of being actually on this line.
Very good. Yes, ma'am. Please stand, state your name.
The name's obviously Stone Road. You said that your current proposal is for two homes for now, so am I to assume that there will be proposals for additional?
No, no. All we're taking is the parcel of land that exists, which is, I think, more than 10 acres and, and are proposing to do a minor lot split, which would create two parcels. That would be it. So this would then provide the potential to build two home sites.
For now?
No, that you couldn't build anymore, you couldn't buy it anymore.
I'm just quoting you, when you said for now.
No, I think you misunderstood the term. We are now proposing to create solely two lots, never any more than two lots.
Never any more than two lots.
Right. Because the two lots would be sold, they would be built on, and there wouldn't be any land to develop.
Because that's very different from saying for now.
Well, I apologize if I made that statement, I didn't really mean to, it's, that's what is being proposed right now, solely two lots for two homes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Other questions?
I'm going to ask if there's one to be, we're talking about mining activity disclosure, is that part of this as well?
I think we can make that be subject to...
Sure. There was a retention, I think retention of water force, maybe the compagiation, I think that goes away if there is not a retention.
Right.
But we had quite a good discussion of mining activities.
Yeah, I think we can make that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ryan wanted to comment, mention, thank you. Yes, who else had a number? Yes?
Hi, I'm Sarah Sueda, I'm in 807 Stone Road. So a couple of questions. So the one drive is going to be like in and out, 16 feet?
Yeah, one common driveway, just like in any home, a single driveway.
Okay. And you have the 16 feet, and then you said, so people can see getting out of the driveway, it has to be another 30 feet cleared?
No, I'm saying, out at the street, I think right now, the tree line is like right against the street.
Yeah.
They would have to probably clear a few feet back, so they can see, just like any other hole.
A deep front.
Yeah, right, where your driving, because your driveway just doesn't stop at 16 feet, and you get to the street...
Okay, so this is kind of like why the hell?
Yes, you have the turnout, it's your apron.
Okay.
That would have to be cleared.
Okay. Can you give me a more specific number?
Not really, because it'll be relative to when someone comes in to develop the two lots, prepares the plot plan that's submitted. They would then show the exact amount of area they're going to have to work with.
Are there codes for what standard?
I think when we're dealing with a subdivision, it's a lot different. Those thresholds are a lot higher in terms of site distance requirements, because it's a public road. When it's a private drive, I think those standards probably are very discretionary and can be reduced to a large degree, but still with the aspect of safety, you still want the residents who live there coming and going to be safe and not pulling out when they can't see. So there's a fine line, there's a balance there, I think. To cut what needs to be cut to open up a line for safety, but not mean for what the subdivision required would.
Yeah, subdivision would require us to clear, in all honesty, the whole width. The whole hundred-foot parcel, we would have had to clear all of it.
That was my other question. So the parcel is a hundred feet wide?
Yes, out at the street it's a hundred feet wide.
And how deep?
The overall parcel? It's almost a thousand feet deep.
Okay. And I had something about eight hundred feet back is where the homes start or end?
The whorings are going to be built probably in a range of seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred feet back on the site. You obviously will not be able to see the homes from the street.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a sense, obviously, since it's my driveway that's right across, is what's like the widest point of concrete or runoff that I'm going to see come down?
What you would see, I think, would be what you would envision as any of your other neighboring homes across the street. Their sixteen-foot driveway.
Right.
And their apron turnout, that's basically what you're going to see.
And apron turnout of three feet?
Whatever's your, whatever your driveway is, you can envision, you'll see on across the street.
Maybe two feet at the most.
We would have at least five feet flares, we follow them on each side. So if twenty feet coming in, then you can expect another five and five, so thirty by the time it touches down on the stone road pavement. So that's where you get that trapezoidal apron looking thing.
Okay, so out of a hundred-foot frontage, a third of it's going to be?
The driveway.
The driveway. I'm just trying to get a sense in my head, what's it going to look like?
At the widest point, and then going to narrow back down.
As compared to with subdivision, we would have a whole hundred feet of that.
So there's single family homes, no homeowners association?
There'll be some type of, I'm not sure it's an association per se, but there'll be an agreement between the two parcels because they're going to share a common driveway. Just like, again, as I said, there's any number of this on place here in Independence in which you have a common driveway which are shared by multiple estate homes which are set farther back from the streets. Unless you have one family that builds whole houses. But you're going to, you're going to have some common maintenance of that driveway between the two home sites.
So it goes, so the clearing is thirty feet down? Right, the apron, the driveway?
The driveway would be thirty feet wide.
Okay. How far deep like gets cut into the wood? Not for the driveway, but for like what's the look area, the other five feet and five feet? Is it just, it's all going to be paved? And then it's vegetation again right at the road?
I would imagine not, because you need to see up the mountain road.
Right, so how much of the rest of the property is going to be cleared back a little bit to see?
I think I lost, I lost your question.
Keep on explaining, right, it's a hundred feet.
You're worried about the sight vision of the cars coming out of driveway. So you want to make sure there's not trees and bushes and ways so you can see what traffic is coming down. But I don't think they're going to clear cut all the way back to the house if that's what you're asking.
Well, right, but I don't think it's unreasonable for me to ask how many feet they plan on doing that.
Yeah, it's.
That's my question.
It would be common sense.
Yeah, I think if you're, don't think of it as if we're going to just keep clearing way, way back. They'll be able to clear out of the street, but then, as you would say, if you're across the street, you would look at this driveway, you would basically just see the clearing of a driveway going up. And there'll still be significant vegetation on either side as compared to a street in which you would have had, the whole width would have been cleared and open.
So the thirty feet gives enough that the other seventy feet, as the trees went right up to the road and their vegetation doesn't need to be touched?
And as long as, I would say this, as long as the safety forces say it's okay. But if the safety forces say we need more clearing, then we're cleared.
More clearing so they can see?
Whatever that means, whatever that means.
Yes.
Okay, but I guess I'm just like, are there codes? Is this like structured somehow that when they submit plans, is this written down?
The property owner, just like in your property, is allowed to clear a subdivision code. And I can't think of anything out of my top mind, other than a tree ordinance that really makes a major subdivision plot of trees, but it doesn't speak to what happens after that occurs. There's nothing in the code to prevent them from clear cutting the entire property today.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be crystal clear of what we're talking about here.
Thank you.
Um, I did have one other question or suggestion. So there's an existing driveway that's up by a house that's on the parcel next to it. That driveway can't be used as like an ingress and then just?
No.
One side of the driveway is an egress?
Not really, because that present home that's there is a separate parcel. It's not going to be part of this anymore. That home, that driveway will be left in its condition that it is to, so I think rest for that existing home. The proposal here is to build a new driveway, just like you, if this was a, you know, any lot along the street that is presently there and not built on, you would be building a property. So this is the same concept as building that, that single property.
And then one last question. So protocol to manage traffic during construction?
I'm not sure of that, other than it'd be no different than any other home that would be built along a public street. They would first come in, process of construction would be, they would first come in, have to do clearing to get the driveway back. You would be building then, choice of the contractor, they would have to strip the top soil where the driveway is going to be, they would set down a stone base. And then as the construction, the home, which was coming excavate the basement, all the materials you need, the block and the masonry and all of the components of the home would be using that access driveway, which would be more likely the aggregate driveway. And then when the home sites were done, they would then, if they were built simultaneously, they would then come back on that path, which is the same as the driveway, regrade it, find a second grade disposition, and then do the finished surface. No different than every single home site you built. So essentially, the other than the driveway is for the walk.
And I would argue that Stone Road has unique challenges with the eighteen-wheelers coming down. But maybe that's more a question for the planning commission in terms of our safety forces, the, what protocol do we have in place to manage the traffic that's going to get congested with the construction?
I would think we would use, as we always do, reasonableness. So if we got a problem there during construction, if we have to put police there to monitor that traffic, we will do it. There's no if and buts about that. We'll always take that as citizen safety first.
Yeah, the construction traffic here is going to be far, far different than subdivision is being built. Here, the construction traffic solely is that element to build that individual home. So you're not going to have anywhere near the magnitude of vehicles during that process.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Couple last questions, then we're going to, please.
Yes, I'm wondering, both, both these houses obviously need utilities running back there. Are they going to be underneath the driveway? And if not, then how much room, I would say the driveway, would you need, you know, clear cut, cleared to run like sewer and water and natural gas?
I think when you clear the driveway, they would be clearing, because you've got to do some grain, you've got to have it open up to drive through, you may be clearing some distance on either side. Would be more logical for you to then try to run your utilities, because you've got two homes.
Right.
So you've got like two sets of utilities. Each one would run up, we'll call it the, we'll call it tree lawn. But you're going to have some grass area beyond the driveway, outside of the driveway, that you would run those utilities. It'd be less desirable, I think, to put them right underneath the driveway. If you had any repairs to do, you'd be digging the driveway.
But with the, with the utilities, I mean, could you just run one line back and then split it? Whether it's a sewer or natural gas or water?
No, I think you would have, the circumstances here would be each home would be serviced individuals. They'd have their own sanitary connection. All the water, sanitation, their own electric. The only thing that could be in common is probably the electric, because the distance, this is bad. They probably would be running primary service line back underground instead of a transformer back near the homes for the electric service. Because the size of these homes, they're going to demand a larger amount of electricity. But the water's code is that one service for one home, you can't use multiple services. So it would be required because on two water connections, same thing with the sanitary, you're going to need to have a connection for each one.
Thank you. Okay, one last question.
I have one question that pertains to us being there is, right now, trucks are already going off the road and running up my front yard. And if this construction goes through, it'll probably be even worse. Are there any plans to put gravel in these ruts on Stone Road? I mean, even before construction starts, it won't be so bad? I mean, I mean, come down to my yard, you see, it looks like hell. I mean, just walk down the street.
Which, may I ask?
Yes, please.
Yeah, the little bit of Stone Road across the street regarding the ruts is one of the things. But you can have all these excavating equipment and so forth on, and Stone Road is narrow. And then you've got the eighteen-wheelers. So you've got equipment on one side, and those trucks are going to be moving over even more. That's one issue, but what about damage to our property or the other neighbor's property?
Well, if there's any damage, you report it to the City of Independence, and they're going to meet the developer and the homeowner, fix it up. That's a fact. Don't worry about that. But I agree with you, you would have construction equipment there to put up a home, that's going to happen. That's, it's a fact of life. Yes, sir, the last question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Guzzi, and I live, we live on Stone Road. And all of us on Stone Road, the residents, are very concerned about flooding. Not only in our city, but the potential that this development could have on the Hemlock Creek Trail that's being finalized in its late stages. And the impact that the volatility of the storms that we're facing now because of climate change could have on that trail and also the surrounding area. And so ironic in today's Independence Gazette, they did August 2nd. The title of that article, "Independence: Taking Proactive Approach to Flooding Issues." And I was pleased to hear that. I'd like to read a part of that article today. Another aspect of controlling runoff and drainage in the City of Independence is the strict regulation of sewer plants for new businesses and developments that build within our community. According to Don Ram, that's our city engineer, the city's stormwater ordinances require detailed hydraulic and hydrologic analysis from potential developers. The developers' plans for new construction must provide assurance that the development will not cause flooding in the specified property or the areas surrounding the proposed development. Home builders are also required to keep the new stormwater management system clean and operational during the entire home construction process. Brand gives a specific example of storm management process with the new Pult subdivision. Improvements that were installed in advance of the first home being constructed include the storm sewers and inlet basements which collect and convey site stormwater runoff to retention bases and present, in parentheses, large ponds that store rainwater during significant rain events and release the water at rates less than or equal to runoff rates that existed on the site prior to the development of that site. I think that's fantastic, and I'm glad that our city is taking that approach. And let's hope that if this company plans to build one, two, or several homes, that we don't run into problems or flooding. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you. Do you want to add anything to that comment that's great article? I read that myself.
Very specific to large developments.
I, I know, so.
Very specific. This is a little bit difficult right now. But it was appropriate for the prior developments, seven, eight, nine.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, great. Any other comments real quick? You read Hector's own stuff.
But I'm just confused by what he said and the discrepancy between what he said. So there's something about they measure the amount of runoff, yes?
Yes.
And now you're saying that's for major subdivisions? So smaller subdivisions never have to meet that parameter?
It's a magnitude issue. I mean, large developments, in essence, create large differences in runoff characteristics. Here, again, single-family residential homes, one per lot. It's as minimal of an impact as you're going to get with a house construction. So the code doesn't require the individual homeowners, your, your house does not have a detention basis for what the trees got cut down at your house that's built. No more than these are going to be required. So it's just the code doesn't require it. For mass tracts of land, it's subdivided in a hundred, you know, forty, that whole deal up was forty-two homes, I believe. So it's just a different scale of development, different impact, runoff is significant. The differences on a large scale, this is as minimal as it can be.
Thank you, Dan.
The Anne Souths, Stone Road. So what you're saying is that Independence is going to be corrective with rain runoff except for this new development on Stone Road?
No, not at all. I think, I think what, what that article says is that Independence has been doing a great job with stormwater runoff. In fact, it's one of the few communities in the area that actually pays for their own stormwater management. And that guy over there has been doing a good job with it. What he, what, what that article directly indicated was that any major development is going to have stormwater controls put in place. Now, I hate to see you have to go take your old house and do the storm management processes that are going around the country and have to pay that cost yourself. All the residential homes in our community right now have, go into a storm system that's been developed for many, many years. Anything that's new now has to go through a process, and that's major development. Forty homes need to have that first flush stormwater managed. That's it.
It sounds like a contradiction to me.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
It's not at all. You're talking, you're talking oranges and apples.
May not be to you, but what I'm saying is, as a resident, that sounds like a contradiction. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, great, you have any comments?
No.
Thank you.
I would just like to say thanks to our city for taking care of stormwater management. We should be proud as residents as what we do for a city for our stormwater management. I travel the country looking at certain situations like this, and those, those, those opportunities are not taken by those communities. So kudos to our engineering department and our city officials for staying on top of that, not only paying for our own stormwater management, but also paying taxes as homeowners to help other people in the region.
Thank you, Jim.
Just to make sure, Eric, that the town drive, that driveway is going to be right in the middle of that hundred, hundred feet, so it's not going to be, because we had a concern last time on three, it's going to be very close to one house, but that won't be an issue.
The intent here would be to set the driveway at the street. And then, again, I'm sure the intent would not be to just make a beeline back a straight linear driveway. The intent would be to morph that or to create curvature in which if you were driving along Stone, or if in fact you lived across the street from the neighbors, they wouldn't look up the driveway except with a whole galley. So the idea, when the plot plans are done, would be to create curvature in the shape to cover over by trees on a straight line side back.
Very, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. In regards to the water runoff, I'm very confident our engineering department, when it comes to the final site plan approval, that they will work well with the developer and the surrounding neighbors to ensure that runoff is minimized. And I know that during the construction process, the Cuyahoga County Soil and Water Conservation will oversee the project to ensure that there is no erosion and there is no sediment running off the site. That's what they do with any home that's built within our city. So I don't have any concerns there. As far as the shared driveway is concerned and the flare and the apron coming on. As far as the shared driveway is concerned, and the flare, the apron coming off the Stone Road, as Mr. Kramer mentioned, there's a number of examples of this within our city. One is just north of Romito's Pizza on Brexville Road. It's a driveway that feeds three or four different houses. Very aesthetically pleasing, not intrusive on the surrounding neighborhoods at all. You wouldn't even know there's houses back there. I envision this driveway being very similar to that. The building zones are set much farther back from the rough areas setback than the previous plans, so the impact on the riparian setback is greatly minimized compared to what we've seen in the past. It's really all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Longrider, do I have a question here? Are we gonna have a development agreement of some sort?
No.
Why?
Why would we have a development for two houses? What we will have is a driveway easement that Mr. Kramer spoke about. That's absolutely necessary, if we're gonna have a common drive for purposes, you know, these people are gonna get a loan from a financial institution, they'd ask for that anyway, so.
Right. Our next step would be for, certainly, the final.
What would be in that?
Well, that's my question, too.
There would be nothing in there, but I can think of.
What do we normally have in this development agreement?
Uh, we have the, the, the staging of construction and development agreement, we have bond money, one that is paid, one that is refunded. We have usually in a, in a development, I can't think of a development, but we have a, that we've had a development agreement other than a major subdivision, so we have the homeowners association, we have a facility to approve the declarations, a facility to go in on the property and maintain any stormwater runoff.
We have, for example.
Or stormwater detention basis.
We have, for example, the size of a home.
Now, we only have one subdivision, one that involves several hundred where we're requiring a minimum size. There's, there's not a maximum size even in that development agreement. I would imagine a five acre lot, those are gonna be some very, very nice homes back there.
Well, but I get a little bit concerned, though, Mr. Kramer indicated the home would be huge, I think, to where the use of large, okay? Large. And I just, and I just wonder if, if we have a pristine area there, if we have a home too large.
You're not, you're not gonna be able to legally restrict their size of their house.
Why not?
You're just not gonna be able to legally restrict your size of your house.
Because?
Well, 'cause I can't think of a legal reason that you could tell someone how big you can build your house.
Unless the developer would say these homes are restricted to this type of square footage.
Well, first of all.
I'm just, I'm trying to find out.
The ZISR, which can speak for themselves, but with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, the only thing that a larger house is gonna demand is a deeper conversation with Don and his department about solar.
I understand it. I'm trying to think about it. This is a pretty sensitive area.
I understand that.
Okay. Therefore, the more we can ease the sensitivity of this area for the neighbors. That's what, yeah, let me play, thank you. It seems to me, the more we can ease the sensitivity for the neighbors, the more comfortable they're in the field with respect to this development. Therefore, in terms of the size of a home, if the developer said, yeah, if I can limit it, that'd be fine. The other question I have, and I think Sarah raised a very valid point, how do we know that Mr. A buys one lot, Mr. B buys every lot, they get together and they come here for a sub lot, split? So, well, I understand. So I would suggest, if we had a development agreement of X, whatever that means, that the applicant would say, no, we're gonna sell the lots to A and B, no, you cannot sublot it or subdivide it, period. Therefore, because Sarah raised a valid point, a very valid point, how do we know we don't? So if we put that in an agreement of some sort, whatever they wanna call it, identity we can give, because of the sensitivity of the area, give the residents more comfort. That's my point. And if the, if the applicant will agree to it, then we're home free.
Okay, so just to respond, Mr. Chairman, as far as the comfort level, I can appreciate the comfort level. I would say that I appreciate the ZISR Construction Company abandoning their eight sites to a two site to make the residents more comfortable. I realize that that was probably leading towards a very expensive lawsuit for both sides, so I, on behalf of one, appreciate the savings on both sides of it, and the fact that, you know, perhaps a request for maybe more than two homes in, you consider, I appreciate placing two very nice homes in there to the, for the residents' comfort level. I appreciate the fact of taking the resident across the street's concerns regarding that driveway, softening that, so it looks like a normal driveway. Wasn't even aware about the six houses that I'm practicing, I've been growing that down up the down, I wrote for almost twenty years, man, so that would be very nice. The only variance, the, the development group, Mr. Chairman, I hear what you're saying is, but the fact of the matter is that there are some residents that would like that to remain pristine and natural, that's not reality.
Right.
It's in anybody's world. The issue is the developer and soon to be two homeowners will be able to buy those houses and develop those, just like any other property, they're subject to our code. And as far as a development agreement, limiting the size of, that's up to the builder, builders want to enter into that, I certainly can craft that. And as far as the ability for someone to come back after the fact and request a third, a second subdivision or a third sub lot, it is a legal impossibility for that to occur. Certainly, someone could apply for it, but they're never gonna do it.
Well, all I know is Mr. Eric Kramer out there, a half hour ago, stated unequivocally, it's only be two lots.
Yes.
Therefore, that being the case, let's, could you sit right here? That's all I ask. Is that that difficult? I mean, he said unequivocally, and I'm all for the development, Frank knows that. That's the only question I have.
It, it, it is, it is whatever the, the city wants me to write and write an agreement, it's gonna be two lots, but we're, we're certainly happy to do it, it's just, I don't know if it's really necessary.
I'm just saying that if, if it gives all the residents comfort factors. Well, you know, we can do this stuff for my god, um, most.
I'll tell you, what would give the residents comfort level, that there's gonna be two houses on there, is to approve the lots, like, as is approving two lots on there and get those lots built, and that would give me a great comfort.
I think we can, we can satisfy them pretty easily.
I'm sorry, Greg.
We can satisfy that context of two lots, I think, very easily. You don't need a developer's agreement. What if in the deed, Greg, we just create a deed covenant, a restriction, that says the land can't be flooded or something like that?
That's fine.
Perfect, fine by me. I'm not, that's the two lots.
Not having the land.
Eric, I'm just, I'm just feeling more comfortable about it, because you know what we went through, a past six, seven, eight, nine months.
Let's get a hold of it, I think, hold of the deed.
Some of for you.
All right, but I don't want anybody to walk away from here for, just like the development agreement, just like the deed, someone can change it, can request to change the deed. So no one walk out of here and please say, just 'cause it's in a deed, it's forever that way. Someone can always come back and request or change the deed. So, you know, I, I don't want anybody to be, to feel like they've been.
However, I would suggest, and I'm gonna turn it, and I don't try to practice law, but I do get dragged into it, as you won't know. I would still think having that deed restriction gives us a lot of ground to go.
Thank you.
Okay. No, would you draft, now I entertain, any other questions, first?
Well, I, I just for the applicant, I mean, just so you know, we have a section 110903, and although legally, I appreciate in favor of this two, two offices, and I appreciate everything I said before, we can't vote on it tonight, because you will need one variance. I'm not too sure on that second one. Eric, you're gonna have to look at it with the building department, that's 116303, and that's the width. I think it's, and we use an average, we don't use a, so I, my guess is you got an average of a hundred across and two hundred deep. But if you don't, then you'll, you'll need a second variance. The only variance you need is from 116304, which is our, our code that requires houses to be built on the seventy-five foot line coming through. And yours are going way back, I'm sure the residents appreciate going farther back, but you'll need to go to the VZA, and our code requires you to at least us table this the next month, vote on it, so that right in 110903, since we have an opportunity to get others' security of approval to be, in this case, we need that one variance. Mike says, well, Mike, do you have?
I'll review it and come up with anything that doesn't comply with the code.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Longrider, then we're going to table this?
This, this would be tabled, I think the applicant didn't hear, you know, didn't hear any of that, but formally, procedurally, wait to table it the next month.
It would just be granted.
It would just be, it would just be, there'll be no new testable.
Okay, fine.
You'll just, you know, quote it up.
So we won't need to make no type of motion today at this point?
We can't.
Okay, fine, perfect, just want to make sure, okay. So therefore, this advocate is tabled to next month, which would be what date? Frank, see, next month at?
September fifth.
September fifth, okay? Thank you.
But then, if you're, you can apply to the VCA.
Oh, I would say why not?
I would do that, I know.
Yeah, I would make that.
Yeah, that's fine.
No, because if they have, we definitely point is, well, what if you wanna go farther back, you know? I think you have an idea of where you wanna put those houses, those houses, so that's your only risk, but if you say you'd like a seven hundred and twenty-five foot variance, because when I'm buying a house at the eight hundred line, and you, the new homeowner comes in and says, no, I want a fifty, you think, you're gonna have to go back to the, you don't have to come back to plan it, I should run up to it.
I don't know, any other answer? Do you really have the home sites at this point?
I got.
So we'll start at some position.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think, by the way, code, as Mike says, I might be working off of my memory and that, the current, code just gives you the opportunity, it doesn't require you, it doesn't require you to get those approvals before this. It's, it's just, the reason for the provision is not only that, to give you the opportunity, but it also allows, in this case, you said, notices out, but in normal situations, it's given property, we probably wouldn't have said as many notices out, excuse me, as property owners, and so we would give the thirty days for someone who was unaware of it, to maybe see it in the publication by the city, and pull time out of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a question for Longrider, does this, does this, the home to the next month, when medication acts, will this then negate the requirement for a traditional lot split approval before the medication?
We will be voting on that.
Or it will be?
Yeah.
Fair enough.
A lot split in two billable lots, that's what the, that's what they.
With the deed restriction. Okay, the next item on the next agenda is Mel Perks and Beverly Ziss requesting a lot split to create sub lots, one A and three A. Thank you. What are you hiding, what is? My, my focus, I feel off to it. I can see the.
We attach the parcel from Nelson. Right. We have a piece of property over here that attaches to that property. So, so we got a property hours, and we're making the eight part.
No problem. Residents to vote, thank you.
We have no residents.
Any, any questions on the slot split? It's a slot split consolidation, I presume. Yes, Ms. Porter?
My only question is, what is it currently zoned?
What is it currently zoned at? Or better yet, Mr. Longrider?
Only ten single hundreds.
I'm sorry, you're, it's residential, okay?
Excuse me? It's residential there, but the rest of it is agricultural. The rest of it.
But we're in the residential section.
We're not in the agricultural area.
So, Chad, you know, if you're in the agriculture, you could tax break.
At all.
There's no that.
We do. We have the same time.
Okay, I didn't say a word. Okay, any other, any other comments? Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Friedell? Mr. Wachowski?
Just on that, we're certain that there are no dising utilities in the area that's being vacated for utilities with air.
No, and they're outlined anyway, because the utilities go off the dry.
So the vacation is, because there's nothing there presently to, to require the easement?
No.
No, no, it, it abuts the dry easement, there's a sixty-foot dry easement coming in, that, that piece abuts the easement.
Do you wanna see it? This is the time, and this is the case, this also.
Any other questions? Okay, we're gonna vote for approval.
Second.
Seconds left. There's no subjects to, I miss nothing, no? Okay, go on.
Please, sir?
Yes.
Did you?
Yes.
Have we had it?
Yes.
With how?
Okay, any other comments, Greg? No. I, I do have one, one question. Okay, please. We talked about the last month, month ago, about the Rockstone Road, and how they're in about making that statement, or have they?
Uh, yes, I did look into it.
Oh, you did?
It is written into the development agreement, and it is part of their agreement that they have to abide by.
Okay, I'm, 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 I'm,